Good evening, welcome to the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is Monday, June 20, 2011. If you are watching live today, Monday, June 20, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. The call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can pick up our meetings on Verizon or on Cablevision as well as online at PCTV76.org. Our next regular meeting is Monday, June 27 at 8:00 p.m. with a work session at 7:00. So, we have a relatively short agenda tonight, one of which is a public hearing on an amendment to the zoning code in the Central Business District, which is a repeat of a public hearing we had several weeks ago, and we're repeating it in order to make certain that we have buttoned down some procedural details. And then we have a bunch of resolutions, and then we'll return to work session. But I know there are a bunch of people here that may be here for those subjects, but if there's anyone here who wanted to comment on any other subject, you're welcome to do so now. Okay. I had a number of announcements to make, and the first is that the Pleasantville Music Festival is coming up in now, what, three weeks, I guess? The music festival, it's the Seventh Annual Music Festival taking place on Saturday, July 9 down at Parkway Field. It is a really nice lineup. You can go to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com and get all the details about who's coming, who's playing. I do think that there is maybe more so this year than any year in the past, really something for absolutely everybody. We did a PCTV show last week with Rich Sarfati and Saul Skolnik, the co-executive directors, and Jason Finkelberg, who was the general manager of our partner, 107.1 The Peak. And that show, if you're interested in hearing more about the music festival and seeing six or seven different clips of some of the groups that are playing, is playing now on PCTV at 8:37 in the morning, 2:37 in the afternoon, and 8:37 at night. So that's a rotating schedule three times a day. It's about an hour-long show, and you can also see that on PCTV76.org on on-demand video. So, the real takeaway from all of this is it's less than three weeks to the music festival, and get thee to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com where you have the opportunity to buy tickets online and print them out. That's new this year. You don't have to buy them and then wait for them to be sent. You can print them out directly, a barcoded ticket. And if you are more inclined to buy a hard ticket instead of an online ticket, you can also do that at the Village Bookstore and at Cold Stone Creamery, both on Washington Avenue, and at the Art of Wine on Bedford Road. So, please buy tickets. It's going to be a great day, the usual array of music, as well as the Beer and Wine Garden led by our local partners, Captain Lawrence and Prospero's, things for kids, vendors, lots of different food. It's going to be a great day, so please come. Also wanted to mention what some of you may already know, and that is that as of June 1, plastics recycling has been expanded. It used to be that plastics recycling was limited to number 1 and number 2 plastics. Those are the numbers that are molded inside the little triangle on the bottom of your packaging. It has been expanded now so that you can recycle in your regular commingled bin plastics number 1 through 7. So, some of the stuff that you've been in the habit of looking at and throwing out, you can now look at and throw into the recycling bin, and that includes, and I read this off the Westchester site, most personal care and food packaging, yogurt cups, takeout food containers, including the ones that are microwave-safe, are now recyclable, beverage detergent, medicine, and shampoo bottles and their caps. And please, as always, items should be rinsed clean before you throw them in. So, that's a great opportunity to expand our recycling, and also a good opportunity to thank our recently established recycling committee that had a day down at the recycling center a couple of weeks ago. Just, I think, several hundred people showed up. They were recycling cellphone batteries and familiarizing people with the broader services we have, so it's a great thing. Jonathan points out another piece on this plastic recycling that's worth mentioning, and that is that you cannot recycle plastic foam like hot beverage cups, trays, or foam peanuts or something for packaging materials. So, the full details are available at the Westchester County website, and if you're interested, take a look there about all of the pros and cons. So, another thing I wanted to mention, which some of you may know already because we did mention it once before, and that is that as of June 1, we expanded the online services available at our website, Pleasantville-NY.gov. So, effective June 1, you are now able to pay your water bill and your tax bill online. There are a number of different payment options, and they're printed on the bills now. And as is the case for all these online things, you'll pay a service fee for certain kinds of charges, especially a credit card charge, but you can minimize that if you use a bank transfer where you enter the routing number and the account number. So, Pleasantville-NY.gov, if you are so inclined, it's a great opportunity to be able to pay your bill in an easy and quick manner and get instant certification that arrived on time, and it also benefits the village because it reduces the amount of handling of paper that we have to do in Village Hall, so we encourage everybody to do that. The last thing I wanted to mention in announcements is a little bit of a darker note, and that is that we have seen in the warm weather a spike in vandalism around the community. Not only vandalism, idle vandalism against property, but also some circumstances where people in the downtown area have been intimidated by what was going on. There have been quite a few examples of shrubs and bushes and trees that village tax money has been used to plant that have been destroyed and torn out. We've had situations where cars, and in a few cases, people have been pelted with eggs downtown, and we have, as you know, ongoing concern about alcohol consumption, especially underage alcohol consumption going on downtown. So, we've just had an extended conversation with the police chief, and I want to report to all parents and to all kids that we're running out of patience with that kind of problem. It's a small number of people, but those people need to understand that this kind of behavior just isn't going to fly, and we have directed the police department to take as firm a stand as they can against this, and when people are of age to be arrested for vandalism, they will be. So, we're in a circumstance where I can tell you with certainty that quite some thousands of your dollars have been destroyed in the last month by idle vandalism, and we intend to catch up with the people who are responsible for it in every way we can. So, please pass that word around. Nobody's trying to be draconian. Nobody's trying to create a community where people aren't free to hang out in reasonable and peaceable ways. Pleasantville's a great place to do just that, but when you overstep the bounds, we're going to come and expect you to take responsibility for it. So, more on that probably over the next coming weeks, but worth noting. Did anybody else have anything to comment on? Worth noting again, the farm market is up and running. As you know, that's on Saturday mornings from 8:30 to 1:00 p.m. Memorial Plaza, a number of new vendors and some different offerings, so we encourage you to come down and see all of that. So, our next order of business is the public hearing. Is there a motion to open the local law amending Chapter 185, Section 185-20, Central Business A-2 District?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The matter in question is a discussion, as you know, that we had several weeks ago, and it revises the zoning in the Central Business A-2 District, which is essentially the old village commercial district. In the following manner, we add to the permitted uses, the additional verbiage that says permitted principal uses, blah, 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 all as stated in the record, are now permitted, quote, and this is the added copy, provided their hours of operation are no earlier than 6:00 a.m. and no later than 10:00 p.m. So, that would establish the guideline in the old village that permitted principal uses as described in Section 185-20 of our zoning code would be restricted to operation between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. So, are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public who would like to make mention about this? Welcome, sir.
Peter Allen, Sixty Grove.
Come on up if you would, because they can't hear you at home.
I don't know if we need to rehash what we spoke about a few weeks ago, but there's a lot of people in the community who are very concerned by this. We've seen the fact that the quality of life can be really detrimentally served by having late hours. The current retail establishments don't stay up late. There's no need for them to be up in that late. We've put a petition before you showing you the community's concern about this, and we think this is the right way to go. So, I don't need to rehash these arguments, but I just want to make sure that you know that we're very, very unanimous as a community who live in the old village, that we want to keep the flavor of the old village. There are a lot of threats to it with traffic, late night hours, and we want to try to limit as much as possible to make it still a good residential area.
Thank you. And you're quite right. We do have in the record the petitions and comments from the neighborhood, as well as the comments from other members of the public and members of the board when this was last discussed. So, any further comment from anyone?
No.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. So, we can now move to the resolutions, Mindy, number 140.
This is...
I would read it in its entirety.
Read it in its entirety?
I would.
Okay. Whereas the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, Westchester County, New York, the village is considering adopting a local law amending Chapter 185, Section 185-20, Central Business A-2, establishing hours of operation for certain uses. And whereas the Board of Trustees has reviewed a short environmental assessment form prepared by Village Administrator Patricia Dwyer in conjunction with the proposed local law, and whereas pursuant to Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law as amended, known as the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECPRA, and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Department of Environmental Conservation of the State of New York, being 6 NYCRR Part 617 as amended, the village desires to comply with the SECPRA and the regulations with respect to this local law. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville as follows. The Village Board of Trustees hereby determines that the local law constitutes a Type II action, which under SECPRA and the regulations in particular, 6 NYCRR, Section 617.5(c)(2), will not have a significant effect on the environment. Accordingly, no further action under SECPRA is required.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe the short environmental assessment form you've established?
So, the State Environmental Quality Review Act requires that when you take an action such as a zoning amendment, that you review it in the context of environmental impact. And the SECPRA short form essentially just addresses the nature of the project, what exactly the impact would be, and whether or not there was any concern that it may have detrimental impacts that may have to be mitigated. And in this instance, there being none, the board can provide that a short form be filed, and SECPRA becomes satisfied as an administrative procedure.
Okay. Any comment on that?
No.
All right. All in favor of Resolution 140, the secret determination regarding the local law?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously, number 141.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves local law amending 185, Section 185-20, Central Business District A-2 Districts as follows: The Section 185-20 of the Central Business District A-2 District permitted uses, permitted principal uses, a structure of building may be erected, altered, arranged, designed, or uses, and a lot premises may be used for any of the following purposes and for no other: retail stores, and banks, and bakeries, delicatessens, and ice cream parlors, with a maximum of eight seats for customer use, and we're adding to that, provided their hours of operation are no earlier than 6:00 a.m. and no later than 10:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just want to mention that I got my paper out of order there. I should have mentioned in the context of the secret determination that, as is required, we have forwarded this local law to the Planning Commission to receive comment, and we also have in our possession a letter dated April 4 from Edward Burrows, who's the Commissioner of Planning for Westchester County, who writes, "Thank you for notification of the proposed amendments to the text of the Village zoning ordinance. The proposed amendments would change the requirements for retail stores and banks, bakeries, delicatessens, ice cream parlors within the Central Business A-2 District to require the hours of operation to be no earlier than 6:00 a.m. and no later than 10:00 p.m. We have reviewed this matter under the provisions of Section 239 LM and N of the General Municipal Law and Section 277.61 of the County Administrative Code and find that there are no county or intermunicipal planning issues of concern to the county planning board. This action is a matter for local determination in accordance with the community's planning and zoning policies. Thank you for calling this matter to our attention." So, I should have mentioned that earlier. I just want to include that in the record. Is there any comment on the zoning amendment, number 141?
The only comment I'll make is the same comment I made last time. And again, no representatives or merchants showed up at the public hearing to give us any input otherwise, so I left to draw the conclusion this is fine by them as well. And they didn't show up this time either for a matter of clarification, and therefore, I think we're good to go.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously for two, nothing, number 142.
Right. Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby rejects the following bids received on Friday, June 3, 2011, for renovation of the Ambulance Corp. Building, Peter A. Chamillion Sons, Inc., Foremost Development, Caladri Development Corp., Divine Construction, Piazza P. Morrissey Contracting, and Foremen Construction, Inc. And further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for a rebid of said project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe the circumstance we're in here?
Oh, let me.
Yeah, I think actually Mindy probably has a better first hand.
Actually, you might explain just for those who may not...
No.
Explain what the project.
Yeah, because I'm not happy about this. I have my opportunity to blow some steam, but, no, this was a, seeing that we got the ambulance corps back, the ambulance corps, Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps, who occupied the building for over 50 years, had moved to a larger location, and the village was, the building is owned by the Village of Pleasantville, and seeing that we don't have a recreation facility at this point of time, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board lobbied very hard, and we went down there, and we looked at the site and see what we could do with, as far as making it suitable to some sort of recreation facility for the community, and being it close to the fields, and it has a parking lot, and it's easier for people to register, and it was a great, great opportunity. And we had already in an agreement with a consulting firm to look at our facilities and give us some ideas for some type of recreation facility. And we came up with a great plan for this building that would give us some great, a really good room, a place to have some cooking classes, a place, a very large room with very little modification. And we priced out, of course, we have to put in handicap bathrooms, and it has to be handicapped accessible, which the doors are wide enough. You just need to put a ramp in there. There's a wall that we need to take down that is, I could take down myself, and these bids came in quite a bit higher than what was originally estimated by one of these people that submitted the bid even. So, it's just not doable at this price, and something is seriously wrong, either with our spec or with the process. So, we have to start all over again.
Have we heard from Lothrup?
He's in the process of preparing...
But I mean, we haven't talked to him at all since...
Yes, no, we've talked to him.
So, why are these bids, what's their explanation? They let them come in, but give me a preview.
He's in the process of preparing, you know, a response for it. He's talking to the bidders. Yes.
Well, one of, yeah, he was surprised because he walked with us through the building, and was, we were told specifically, "All right, it will cost you this amount of money for these two bathrooms. It will cost you this amount of money to take down this wall." And then, you know, you add it all up, and, you know, it didn't come to what it had come to.
I mean, I can understand being a little wrong, but 150% wrong is a lot...
About how much they were wrong, yeah.
That's about right.
Yeah, that's about right. So, we are rejecting all of these bids.
I mean, we could put a modular up that would serve us better than this retrofitted...
I mean, we could do it ourselves.
Yeah.
So, that may be the option. But we're not giving up. It's too good of a location and building, and we could knock the building down and build another building for these prices.
That's a nice segue to one of our next resolutions. We'd be good at that by the time.
Yeah, although I think that's what we need to do.
Please read Donald, please read Donald.
Yes.
All right. So, we had a second on that, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved to reject the bids, number 143.
That'd be me, right?
Oh, it's me, I'm sorry. Resolved that the Board of Trustees, I'm sorry, I'm still, like, the steam's still coming out of the ears. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement with Donald McDonald...
Who put Ronald?
Architect, 10B Street, Cold Spring, New York, for preparation of bid documents with respect to demolition of 434 Mannville Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
We, as many of you know, are now the owners of the lady plumbing property behind the post office and are going to demolish the buildings that are there and raid the land to create a parking lot. Donald McDonald will assist us in producing the demolition documents for the bidding, and his phase-one fee for design and document production is $4,500. His phase-two for bidding and contract award is $2,500, and his phase-three for the demolition and cleanup phase supervision is $3,500, a very clear and thorough proposal and one that's substantially beneficial to us in comparison to some others that we reviewed. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, number 144.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement with Egan Environmental Consulting, Inc., 14 High Street, Maua, New Jersey, for participation of, for preparation of bid documents for asbestos abatement with respect to 434 Mannville Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Egan Environmental Consultants, again, have proposed, given us a proposal that adds up to $9,965 for asbestos abatement specification and drawings, pre-bid walkthrough, pre-construction meeting, air sampling, abatement air sampling, post-abatement air sampling, overnight shipping to laboratory, air samples, project manager inspections, project management, and air sampling and project monitoring reports, all of which are requirements for entities like us when we're going to take a thing like this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number 145.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, July 11, 2011, 8:00 p.m. prevailing time, 80 Wheeler Avenue, to hear comments as it pertains to a local law amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-59, Schedule 11. Vehicle weight limits as follows. So, this is Section 1 amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-59, vehicle weight limits, deleting the name of the street Bedford Road with no maximum gross weight in pounds from a location from Bedford Road west to the village line. We're adding on Bedford Road a maximum gross weight of 6,000 pounds, and this will be from Pleasantville Road east to Broadway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe the background here?
Yes, and I also just want to note it does exclude buses. The county bus does come down Bedford Road. We had, in the recent years, some inordinate amount of truck traffic and heavy vehicle traffic on Bedford Road. The designated truck route is Mannville Road, and it's adequately posted in, at least in one or two conspicuous places, but for reasons unknown, a lot of traffic has been coming up Bedford Road, and it's not only been a concern for our infrastructure, which lies under the road, being able to handle the weight, but residents have been upset by the noise and the vibration, the vibroterritorial noise from some of these trucks. So, we've been asked to add to our village code some language that explicitly suggests that the truck route is not Bedford Road, and particularly from the point of access, which would be...
Seven-Eleven.
Right by 7-Eleven, all the way to Broadway. Because Broadway is a truck route, so we couldn't go any further, obviously. That's Route 141 at that point.
So, does that mean up to the stoplight on Bedford Road?
Yes.
I just want, would like to add thanks to Chief Love for finding, bringing this to our attention because of his inability to...
Ticket.
Ticket, yeah, as much were enforced, what we thought was already there.
All right. So, this obviously gives us some enforcement capacity we don't now have. It requires a public hearing, which will take place on Monday, July 11 at 8:00 p.m. for anybody who wants to comment on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, number 146.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, July 11, 2011, at 8:00 p.m. prevailing time, 80 Wheeler Avenue, Pleasantville, New York, to hear comments as it pertains to a local law amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-66, Schedule 23. Time limit parking as follows. It's on Mannville Road, the north side, we're deleting, Mannville Road on the north side, one hour all from a point 390 feet north of Pleasantville Road to a point 30 feet west of Grant Street, and on the south side of the road, the same distance, but from Memorial Plaza west. And we're adding that it will be one hour, the same time limit, but 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday on both sides of the road. Is that right?
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does that mean that where the 12-hour parking meters are, you're taking them out?
No. This is, it's not where the, where the 12-hour meters aren't. There is one hour parking...
Gotcha.
All the time.
Gotcha.
So, if a resident was to leave their car out there overnight, they would get ticketed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or could, so...
Or could get ticketed. They have been getting ticketed.
Okay. All in favor for posting of that public hearing again Monday, July 11 at 8:00 p.m.?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Patty, before I forget, I was at the Clark Street block party, and being a frequent traveler on Clark Street, I will confirm this. I was reapproached again by sightline problems at Clark Street on Mannville Road.
Okay.
With the parking coming up and down, and it is wickedly horrendous when the schools in session, there's parking all along those...
Because we just changed that. We moved those signs back.
Although it was a good long while ago, and...
We need to revisit...
It was last year.
Maybe some error in the way that the signs got posted.
And at the, and at the other end of Clark Street, too, parking on Clark Street in front of Bedford Road, just in front of Bedford Road, there's some question about whether or not that should be moved back as well. And I can give you a name of a couple of contacts to revisit that, who have done quite a bit of work there to remind me of that. So, if the Public Safety Committee can take a look at that, that'd be great.
I'll refer it. We also need to reconstitute and appoint...
Chief Love to the Public Safety Committee.
I'll put that on the next agenda.
Okay.
Right.
Number 147.
Yep.
Did you do it already?
Yeah.
Right. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, based upon the advice of the village assessor, hereby authorizes the village treasurer to refund any monies that may be due as a result of the following corrections in the 2012 tax rule. Two properties affected, 126 Oak Ridge Road, removed from the refuse district resulting in an adjustment of $403.18. In 205 Mannville Road, assessed valuation to reduce from 48,650 to 45,250, resulting in an adjustment of $279.49.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we have backup here that the Oak Ridge Road property is not in the refuse district, and at 205 Mannville Road, there had been an administrative error in the listing of the assessed valuation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
That was the case with my house.
I wanted to mention, I was away last Monday, but there was an extended and lively discussion about the refuse rates charged for single-family homes and also for co-ops. I wanted to mention, I was away last Monday, but there was an extended and lively discussion about the refuse rates, the charge for single-family homes, and also for co-ops and condominiums. And since that point, we have received letters from the Commons of Pleasantville and from the Roselle School condominium, as well as from Foxwood, expressing their opposition to any change in the current arrangement whereby co-ops and condominiums pay 75% of the standard fee for annual refuse pickup for single-family homes. So we've added that to the record, and we'll be discussing that further tonight as well. So in more sessions. Any further comment, new business, anything to add, any comment from the public? There being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Remember again, PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. You can log on there right now and print out your tickets for the music festival, which is Saturday, July 9. Thanks very much.